All right, without objection, those are sounding more important on those items.
Items one through eleven are items that the public carries. Items twelve through seventeen are items which public carries have been held. Items eighteen through fifty are items which public carries have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, without objections, those items are before us now, specialist members. The specialists to my right, Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make verbal technical limitations, item thirty-two. The motion incorrectly spelled Justice Hawkins' name, Kate, or Hawkins. And I also like to attempt to be corrected to the proper spelling of the person. Additionally, I would propose that I like to excuse myself by addressing the case of the plaintiff, give and award an open opportunity for the project to show the side.
All right.
Is there a second to Mr. Price's technical amendment?
Yes.
Okay, and just don't check, Mr. Price recuse on item eleven, sir? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Roman.
Thank you so much. I'd like to call item fourteen, special for brief comments before our road ban, I'd like to make an amendment, which is that I believe that the matter caused a homelessness committee report dated November sixth. Item fourteen on today's agenda, the amendment to remove the second recommendation, which is to approve that your housing bed rates is applicable to the effect to the January first, twenty twenty-five level staffing model, wage tier-one rates as follows: sixty-nine dollars per bed for sites with fifty-one bedrooms or more, seventy-nine for bed for sites with fifty beds or less sites, we'll remove that.
Okay.
Is there a second to your comments amendment?
Second. All right, any others on my right? Say no, okay, Councilmember Coster.
Mr. President, I'd like to hold items forty-nine and fifty together for a comment.
Okay. Councilmember Pineda.
I'd like to call forty-four.
All right, Councilmember Armentes.
Thank you, Councilmember President. Item twenty-four, special for separate votes.
All right, Councilmember David.
Figure was discussed in item one hundred and six, forty.
All right, we have the amendment.
Yes, Peter. So the amendments, and the reasons I moved item twenty-six on today's agenda, the amendment to change the following matters. Transfer appropriate: one hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred dollars from the Central Los Angeles Recycling and Transportation Clarks, Community Amendment Trust Fund, number forty-seven S slash fourteen, and one hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars ninety cents from the CD fourteen Real property trust fund, number six ninety-six, and seven nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents from the CD fourteen Real property trust fund, type one, type two, budget number six ninety-six, and forty thousand dollars, two hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and three thousand dollars and seventy-nine cents from the CD fourteen Public Benefits Trust Fund, number fifty-seven L slash fourteen, account number one four zero 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 one, and this is the change: one hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seven cents in the Neighborhood Services and Handover Line, in the General City Purposes Fund, number one hundred slash fifty-six, and twenty-four thousand thirty-three dollars and fifteen cents from the General City Purposes Fund, number one hundred slash fifty-six, account number zero eight seven one, CD fourteen C seven, total six hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars and one cent to a new account in the Transportation Trust Fund, number eighty-four zero slash nine four, entitled Mission Road and Plaza del Sol Trust, for the construction of a crosswalk on Mission Road and Plaza del Sol. Is there a second to the motion? Please hold it, Councilmember.
All right. Any other specialists on this matter? All right, what's available for us to?
Mr. President, Councilmen now on twelve, thirteen, and fifteen through seventeen, sir.
All right, those items are now before us, let's close the roll.
I think.
Close the roll, let's have a record.
These are all like basic, um, street lighting.
All right.
Would you counsel like to go into public comments, sir?
Yes.
Okay, I shall make the instructions.
All right, so we're going to public comment, and then I think we're going to get back to business. There's actually a really important, uh, bill today about homeless bed rates, because the city has been essentially underfunding homeless service providers, and now they owe a bunch of money back to the county, particularly to an agency called LASSA. And so Ruth, Ruthless and I have been writing about this on Substack, and what a mess homelessness contracting is in the city of Los Angeles. I was just hearing from one of our attendees how bad it is, particularly in Kevin DeLeone's district, and Kevin is really the reason I came down today, because he's only got a few more dates here, actually, and then he is going to be gone. I'm not sure, but I think on the left here, that is Martin Perez, who works for KDL. I could be wrong, but I thought, I think that's him, and he's the guy who followed Isabel Harado's daughter, who will succeed Kevin, and then asked her a leading question about the police, got her to say fuck the police. I think that's him, actually. Is that Martin Perez? Works for KDL, right? He did the fuck the police tape. Right. I think it's him, right? It's KDL staffer. Yeah, it's him, right? The one who did the Isabel Harado tape, right? Fuck the police tape. I thought, I thought I saw a picture of him. Yeah. Like Kevin was cool there. Everybody has Google, look up Martin Perez. Fourteen's unavailable? They don't want public debate on that? I mean. That's kind of. Yeah. I mean, Housing and Homelessness Committee, when I've taken that up, has been just person after person being like, the city is terrible, homelessness, response, absolutely terrible. Yeah, because they get money off of it. They're good at making homelessness. If anybody has on Google, look up Martin Perez, M-A-R-T-I-N, Perez, P-E-R-Z, Kevin DeLeone staffer, I think that's him. All right, so we're not even going to have a debate about the item I really wanted to hear about. This is why I've been showing up to like the CAO, like Homeless Strategy Meeting, because nobody goes to that one, and that's the most important one, actually, because it's where the information comes in from the county in LASSA, and then it goes to Housing and Homelessness Committee, right? Because Nithya's the chair, so like last week she rolled her eyes at me, actually, I think people noticed it too. All right, so. Are we going to public comment? All right, so it's public comment, which means everybody's going to start tuning out now. Kevin knows who I am now, so it's harder for me to get close to him, but like, if he gets up, I'm going to follow him. All right, so. City council's kind of a joke. So if you haven't read the news today, it is actually martial law in South Korea right now, because the rightist government has accused the opposition Democratic Party of helping the North Koreans, and of corrupting the justice system there, actually, and so South Korea is in martial law. This is what we're doing here today. Kirk Korean's going to go in the back. I've honestly stopped caring about this guy. Kirk Korean into the back. So if you didn't know, we had elections here, and Kevin DeLeone is out, and then Kirk Korean is out too, because Kirk Korean got churned out. Is Heather Hutt here today? No, no Heather Hutt. I haven't seen. Who goes here? I mean, I honestly can't blame them for not wanting to listen to this. Kevin is talking with Blue and Phil. A nice voice. Yeah, what I've been trying to figure out is if this is an act or some, or not, because he actually very closely resembles an LEPD officer, and I had somebody else tell me that they saw him with LEPD in the past, but. LEPD would comment, I could come up with any records even about what the staffing was here to try to figure out, right? Like, is this a game, or is this like serious? Every once in a while, he'll break into like a safety lecture. And then if you don't know, the city council is actually afraid of the audience here, believe it or not, it's been an issue in the past. All right, so Dori is signaling over there. She's, he's going to do a face signal, he just did it.
Uh, for general public comment. So, uh, general public comment, I'm here to talk about this thing, because somehow she informed me that all of her family, all of her friends are here, by somehow, however, our LEPD are not doing much, our city attorney and our council members are not doing much. I don't understand why that we allow for women to continuously create a victim of the life of murder, however, there's no city politician maker are doing much about it. I am in the next phase, I have no support, and then this woman providing me with clothing, this woman providing me with food, so I am here to make sure that if anyone was to hurt this woman, you got to get through me first. I am putting my back on the line to protect this woman, because I will not allow any woman to be bullied, to be raped, uh, to be killed, to be attacked like that. I am here to support and protect this woman, right here.
Harry and Kelly. I'm holding against you to public comment. I want to thank, uh, Three Inch Shrimp, and he has been, uh, accosted and also discriminated against, and I want someone to help him over here. I appreciate what he said, and it is actually very true. Nobody pays attention, uh, at Valley, I was at Valley College there, you would care highly, Daddy, concerned about Ellen Davis. Ellen Davis, I'm sure died, there were a few others. I, I one time said that, uh, Stella Cia Doolo might have died. Uh, she did, she's helping me, but she doesn't remember too clearly about this woman. This woman's name, uh, uh, Ray Windsor, and they, uh, CSUN, I graduated from CSUN, they will not help me, uh, say where she's at. She would be eighty-eight, she's seventy, I can see.
Got, um, live streaming enabled on Substack now too, so we'll be doing some of this directly on the Substack, but. Continuing to report. I think this is just a good reporting tool. I don't trust Substack to keep my recording, because the person I really need to get to is Kevin DeLeone. So. To the union, you're not here.
Good morning, would you please remind us of the page you signed up under, the items you'd like to speak to?
Yes, to hide or reveal that public comment.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Thank you, um, good morning, I just wanted to come here and talk about, so let me wait real quick, I know that's just been on.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we know that he has been talking about my reporting on these tapes, right, these LEPD tapes that were leaked that created such a stir here two years ago that people still have not totally forgotten it, and it's essentially ruined his career. I think, you know, he sort of got told, right, like, hey, if you go along with this, right, if you don't, you know, feel like, you know, these people, if they actually people recorded me, that he was promised, right, reelection money from the police union in part, and he thought that he could win, but he didn't, so now he lost. Like, last week, I thought he was drunk, um, hungover at least. Today, he's still pretty bearded, um, not looking particularly good, and I do hear that he's having a hard time of losing. But he's kind of, he's kind of laughing about a look. He's now growing a beard, so the guy loses his election, and he grows a beard. Really? I mean, this is a very historic building, I believe it was finished in nineteen twenty-three, uh, is when they got the top on it, and I'm not sure when the last time they did any renovations were in here, this is the John H. Ferraro Chambers, named after the longest-serving city council member. So she wants a living wage. I would like a living wage too, um, but. I kind of say, right, you know, it's like a team sport here, people show up for their team. So the airport workers, right, they, they want more money, the hotel workers want more money, the state of California actually rejected a minimum wage increase. And I agree, Kevin DeLeone is looking rough, you can see the beard. I mean, living a lie and then losing has got to be hard. I mean. He tried really hard to get reelected, it just didn't happen for him because voters are sick of him. I do not have a podcast, I've considered ways to start doing that, mostly startup costs and studio space.
For the very first time, when conducted a misdemeanor, uh, hearing, you know, the first time hearing herself, which has never been done, and they are prosecuting somebody for just gently removing, like this unbuilding of tart by a, um, you know, on the, uh, curbs and rightways. But at the same time, the city, because it's the church, so you know, the full of Scientology, now they have forty road pushes there, this is going to get right off the shelf. It's comparison, it's asking why your chair is thinking. Not my time, I am saying this, you are asking for a content of interest to this state for that.
It's a Bible. City attorney is big mad. Really walked into him coming in.
So you can't make comparisons of the trust, like for clarification, I can't compare the trust.
Answer the question.
I don't think smoking scandal worth this, what do you think smoking scandal? I, I really don't think smoking scandal worth it. But, um, okay, so here we go, so as I be on the panel, I mean my point there, the conflict of interest. Also, I'm going to talk about, uh, CD thirteen is asking to eliminate the city hall for the celebrate disability day. You know what, I'm going to vote no, and I'm going to have a chair, I can even approach the, uh, up there. Eliminate this stupid fight for me, thank you, I don't need it. And also, if the city, uh, if the city can remove, I think for how many months, ask them to negate the planning, uh, the, the, uh, lantern around Elfron Harbor Way, and the full Scientology, if you can, you got to count because thirteen, then don't eliminate this stupid city hall for me, I don't need it or want it, I want the, I want to be able to access Elfron Harbor Way and Tackin Avenue, that's why I want it, I don't care about the stupid fight, I was moving downtown, I'm like, anyway, to see it. So I'm tired of it, and all, and, and even with transgender nation, you know, the full Scientology did, they added somebody who stands gender, who's a protester, to their family, and you know, and to whoever, they don't have a right to do that? And then you're going to light up and argue your gender, but you don't care what the full Scientology does, you're protesters, you don't care how they're treated? You know what I want to say? And, and, uh, maybe smoking scandal will be this too, instead of pledging allegiance, do one thing under Scientology, because that's what it feels like this city is. You all bow down and kiss the feet of freaking Scientology, and we're done with it, stop it. Public comment, that's what, I'm here to talk about full Scientology, the human trafficking organization, okay? And they are doing witcher Wonderland, as a way, damn if you don't believe in Jesus, you don't, you know, witcher Wonderland, Christian, you know, Christmas, okay? And you know what the hell on hover believe, that Jesus was, and this has been their own teaching, number eight, the iron eight, that Jesus was a pet, an edgy pedophile, and that Elfron hover was here to usher them into any Christ. And they're extremely convinced of Christian holiday to recruit people to further human trafficking, senior and child abusing cults. I want to say it like it is, there's too much evidence out there, too many people have up for, talking about how they were treated, I'm sick and tired of you guys, not even being able to get them to put lanterns and go after protesters, I'm probably all talking about it now, you know, the conflict of interest, the city told them they have to pull up the same front of, uh, roses, where this person, or protest was being, you know, uh, and has a court case against them, but the city attorney won't, because of the conflict of interest, you're all worth of Scientology.
All right, airport worker.
Uh, hi, yes, I'm Juan Luñez, I'm a people in that general comment. Hi, Juan Luñez, I've been working for the airport for the past fourteen years, I'm here to encourage you to pass the new wave order, next week is going to be a big decision, um, city council, you guys have decided to prefer the working class or prefer corporations. I've heard the events you guys did, uh, last week, and you said that we had a kickback from COVID, right, well, just last week, it looked like we had two point five million taxpayers, and that was just within four days, that's why we're doing Christmas, so he asked, if he asked me, the city of Angeles, has the work class gone up since COVID, we have been pretty good, we have the World Cup coming, we have the Super Bowl coming, we need to decide to reduce wages, because the working class, the people that live in this LA, the people that actually live in LA can no longer live in the city, this is the reason why we want to pass the new wave, and for you to set amendments to weaken our insurance, I already got better insurance than we do, uh, we feel very in fact, I was going to make a decision, we, we're insurance, our rent, thankfully.
Staffers are just chatting right through it. All right, so.
Hello, my name is Sister Piazza, so the items I will be speaking on, the first item I'll be speaking on, twenty-four, second item I'll be speaking on, thirty-one, and third item I'll be speaking on, thirty-eight, and the general public comment, please. Okay, thank you. So, twenty-four is a violation of the Fourteenth Amendment, which is equal protection, reminder for everybody who doesn't know, and the Fourth Amendment, which is unlawful search and seizure. Forty-one eighteen makes it illegal to use the public right of way to sit, a pardon, sit, lay down, sleep, store, or use, or even maintain, or even place, personal property, so I can't use the public right of way for anything that, other than possibly.
I'm covering city hall. I did my end up.
There are organizations like cults, such as the Scientologists Church, which are violating forty-one eighteen, so why are they not having equal protection? Why are homeless people not having equal protection under the law when these cults are allowed to violate that law? And now.
Forty-one eighteen prohibits camping in certain areas of the city. I'm a journalist, I mean. You know. Really like the swatting. I mean, I think it's a story, I wish some of these other journalists would get out there and cover that, I mean, Eric Levai could cover it, Steph Rice could cover, I mean, The LA Times too, I mean, The LA Times has covered it in the past. I'm actually swamped with stories, but my biggest story has and almost continues to be this basic attempt to subvert the government, um, here in Los Angeles through an illegal tape leak. See, so I've been covering homelessness a lot too, right?
Now, uh, for item thirty-eight, we're going to talk about special recognition of transgender, I remember, when I was eighteen, I came out as a bisexual queer woman, I was thrown out on the street by my unapproving and abusive family, and I became a runaway homeless youth at eighteen, I was already a runaway homeless youth at seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, I went for once you turn eighteen, things do change, that game does get a lot more deadly, so when it comes to transgender being, remember, I hope that you consider forty-one eighteen, and I don't let you consider the ADA noncompliance, because you do have somebody who is a queer woman who experienced transgender, I took testosterone for eight years, I experienced transgender healthcare, and, uh, there, I have a lot to say about that as well, so I do hope that you consider the homeless transgender people who are suffering. Now for my general public comment.
Thank you, one.
Thank you. Thank you. The secret place of the most high. He that dwelleth in the secret place of the most high shall by his shadow be almighty. I will say of the Lord, he is my refuge and my fortress, my God, in thy name I will cry. Surely he shall deliver thee from the sin of sin.
So this is your laptop, do you have, please connect to the subject manager's subject manager.
I mean, this is actually real life, right? Like And again, LA City Council never meets at night, um, like so many other cities do, which would of course allow more residents, um, to have participated in government. She's reading the Bible. I think the LA, I hope LAPD isn't.
This, uh, person is room, pursue us room twelve. So again, just a reminder, everyone, what general public comment is quite broad, you still need to connect to something that puts the subject manager's attention on the city. Good morning. What items would you like to speak to?
I would like to speak on one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven.
Mr. Baker, you have three minutes for the items, and one minute to go.
Yeah, I'm a little long agenda. I think it will bring them along. We have item, let's start off with item twenty-three, I think it was. Twenty-three is for Bluefield, it's for mailers on the Cyclavia route. Um, hopefully, no one is gonna tell us how quickly to be displaced for this. Because I know in passing Cyclavia, they like sweep the area. It's like a community event. How many people are part of the community? Speaking of which, we have item twenty-four, which is a forty-one eighteen motion for Bob Luthenfield. Now, it's what it is, six unhoused people die, have the streets highlight, the light every day. Um, but you have, but you just keep doing this, keep doing, keep putting them more. Are we trying to get to seven today or something here? Forty-one eighteen literally kills unhoused people. It's getting us in the services, not just sweeps and throwing them wherever you feel like it. We have twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, which are motions from the Langford Council, where Kennedy Leons is hiding in the back, and he saw I was gonna speak. Um, so we have, um,
Yep.
Let's see, we have twenty, or twenty-eight, or twenty-seven, I think it was, was, um, uh, stuff for winter Wonderland. I thought he was taking away all the holiday fun as punishment for, um, voting him out.
Most people who have normal jobs, right, are working during the day. I mean, so you can't come to the
We have, so, but there was anything heaven introduces. Twenty-nine is a motion from Marquise Paris Dawson, who's not presiding over the meeting currently. Um, reward money for snitches, uh, reward money for snitches. Maybe give some reward money for information on when shots, shots shoot and kill people. We have a street banner for a school with a lot of money. We have lighting up city hall for National Day of Persons with Disabilities. You know, disabled persons mentioned that you are literally
That is Adrien Nazarian back there with the beer, who was actually just elected to city council and is gonna be succeeding Paul Krikorian. And he was essentially, he's a former state assembly member, and he was such a old boy, hand selected. And you can see he is eating chips. So this is the world's least serious city government. It's crazy though, how generally uninterested, uninterested people are and what goes on in here. And like, I think that's kind of the biggest gap.
City Hall for transgender day of remembrance, just a few feet away from where multiple trans people have been assaulted by the LAPD in this chamber for the last two years. So we have, um, so yeah, then you, you don't do anything to actual poor trans people. You're literally doing nothing. You, you just write up the city hall, why don't we, why don't we have, you know, just some steps, people have to remember as many trans people who died, who fight violence? That we can just keep them alive and have rights for trans people, trans folks. Alright, so general public comment, it's the last, um, last day, last week of this, this guy, of, um, DJ Krikorian and the help racist Kevin Dilly, they're all getting, they're all gonna be gone after Friday. Um, so we have, um, and that's how, has this fellow ever been invited to be honored? You're always so, so loser. Usually, usually you invite anyone to get
I'm sure if Kevin has one more week or two weeks.
Has you ever been invited up to be honored, to be elected? You have to die on the next day. Then you
So this is Ariane, right?
They have like, you know, the dying of the next day. But, but yeah, kind of, you're fucking racist for your hiding and good riddance. But finally, Marquise, why do you flatter my hand every time I call in? Do you wanna answer that? Since it's only with, it's only me and a few others, it's only with your ladies meeting, why is my hand getting whetted on the phone? You wanna answer that?
Yeah, so Kevin didn't even honor, like, respect personally, beat him.
Hi, I'm Stacy Segura, I'd like to speak on all items of general public comment, please. Thank you. I respectfully ask for all working council members, including the president, to please pay attention. I don't know if Marquise was talking to Aland or was up here, but he wasn't listening. Um, so I'll start with forty-five. This is, uh, the, the recess schedule. But I think we all know that this is not an exhaustive schedule of the recesses y'all take. You really get paid a lot to, to work very few hours compared to most workers, I think. Instead of salary, y'all should have to clock in an hour. You should be tracking the hours that you're working. Because I think that your salaries are way too high for how much time you get off. And it's, um, also just something that I've noticed, that usually when kids aren't in school, this body goes on recess. And think about what a luxury that is for the council members who have children, that they don't have to worry about childcare, uh, when their kids aren't in school. That's something else that the vast majority of workers in LA do not get to enjoy. So I encourage everyone, um, listening to look at their extensive recess list. Think about how late they start meetings and ask yourself, do I get to be absent from work and late to work so often and still enjoy good paying benefits and eat my dough? Okay, fine, move on to item twenty-four, which is a forty-one eighteen expansion on
Yeah, Stacy's pretty cool.
In Reseda. I know this area well.
She's actually speaking to issues.
There are lobby shops that take up a lot of public space. The fact that the city cars park on sidewalks all the time. Um, but when a human being is, is existing in public, this body criminalizes it. And we know from our study that forty-one eighteen is a waste of money. Uh, and costs a lot, but does not solve the issue of the unhoused resident population. So I don't understand why this body is entertaining expanding that program at all. Um, we have two different motions to light up city hall, one for trans remembrance and one for, um, disability. The one for disability comes from council member Roman in CD four. And Hugo Soto Martinez, I don't see them in the room, so I have to assume they're not paying attention. Uh, but we all heard from a illiterate device user that what they need isn't four hundred and thirty-eight dollars spent on lights. It's actual access to the city where they pay taxes. On the corner of Vineland and Wiphol, I watched someone in a wheelchair have to turn around and immediately change his route because of the way the light signals aren't constructed on the sidewalks there. They couldn't get their wheelchair through the narrow opening in the sidewalk. But instead of spending money to improve our infrastructure or virtue signaling, while we go into a budget deficit. And Budget and Finance Committee Chair Bob Luthenfeld says he doesn't know why the lights cost four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Isn't that true, Bob?
Yeah. Tracy's over there chatting. So we got Padilla's out here, Kern Price is here, Tracy Park is chatting on the side. Nathan Rahman went in the back with Hugo Soto Martinez. Monica Rodriguez is here. Katie Aristovski is standing in the back. Marquise and Hugo are actually talking. Um, so is Hugo. Kevin Daly is still in the back. I think I see, I'm not sure where Luthenfeld went. Luthenfeld was here earlier. Um, Krikorian is chatting with six, uh, Krikorian is chatting with Luthenfeld. Alexis Fernandez is sitting there. John Lee is sitting there. Krik- Kosker is talking to a staff member. Yeah, Imelda is here. I was actually at Padilla's final debate with, um, Kern Price's staffer, actually. She ran against Marissa Alcaraz after the police union threw money into the race to knock out the more progressive opponent. So Imelda replaced Nuri Martinez, who resigned because of the LA vet tapes. So when people go, what are the LA vet tapes? Well, those are the racist tapes that got leaked right before the mayor's election here in twenty twenty-two. And it really remade the council, because Nuri Martinez resigned and had to be replaced by Imelda Padilla. Uh, Gil Sadio was already lame ducked by Alexis Fernandez, didn't show up for months. Kevin Daly only didn't show up for months and then has sat out the rest of his, um, rest of his term. The LAPL wanted Alcaraz and Padilla in because they were both more police friendly than, um, uh, what's his name? God, Marco Santana. So the LAPL dropped like a hundred thousand dollars on negative ads against Marco Santana, who probably was younger and more progressive than Marissa Alcaraz, who worked for Kern Price. Um, but Imelda came out on top. So basically, the person who's closest to Nuri Martinez replaced her, which is Imelda Padilla. And actually, Imelda's not a terrible person. She'll, she's pretty nice. She'll talk to you a little bit. Um, she's probably one of the more respectful people on council, I think, just because she's from a very traditional Latino family. Herman's just gonna kind of yell. We had her laugh, at least. Yeah, you know, Imelda is actually trying at least. I mean, the problem is more kind of the city council overall is kind of a joke. And like, this is where this is not a functioning government. We're not debating the most important issue here, which is homelessness today. Apparently, the agenda item on it was not even up for public comment. And then the city is actually stalling, um, paying for a federal audit of homelessness programs. Los Angeles having one of the largest homelessness populations in the United States, and is in fact the veterans' capital of homelessness in this country. Um, There's actually a threat that the Department of Housing and Urban Development could potentially cut funds off because we're so bad at accounting for them. Rahman is back out here chatting with her staffers. I think that's her communications director there in the room now. I believe her name is Stella Stahl. Alright, so Wayne Spinnor and Go Pop It. Wayne is usually better spoken. What's up, Travolcato? Yeah, what we've discovered is it's actually kind of hard to swap me here, because I'm already screened for weapons. So it doesn't really work. Plus, I've always covered city council. In fact, people can go on the Substack and they can see me covering city council for an extremely long period of time. Uh, long before I ever touched, uh, live streaming. So I know a ton about city council and it's actually kind of threatening to some of the other reporters how much I know. I need to try to get Kevin Daly on, but he went in the back. I'm gonna try to quiz his staffer here if I can. New district attorney gets sworn in today, Nathan Hockman. Have good day, Travolcato. He's not even joking. They're calling it a gratuity.
The better man. So the officer, when I came in here, said that the last time I was talking about the two girls that escaped from the cult of Scientology. And we brought back to the cult of Scientology, that I was making some type of criminal threat, that's a felony. That's a felony. I actually did six days. It was an email. So first off, speaking about kids being escaped from psychology is not a fucking criminal threat. No fucking deal. And now a fucking criminal threat. Second, there's armed fucking bars in the church of psychology. There's a fucking law, a fucking court, a fucking church. How the fuck is there a phone going on right now? I'm gonna drive 43 fucking times in that fucking possession. And they keep on shutting down. And there's 250 fucking landowners out there to start me from talking about the few fucking bros that just escaped from the cult of psychology. Wait a fuck off. That's not a fucking criminal threat.
Fuck you.
Good afternoon, I'm here for public comments, but you can tell the values. I can't forget the four.
Yeah, uh, the DA's office has a public. They're, they're, yeah, so they're beyond, they're beyond, it's like 10 days.
You notice that you don't say the panel.
All right, so the airport workers are here, right? These are like lobbyists in the back of some type. And then it's the gadflies. And that's the city council. I think, I guess the airport workers are gonna leave now. So again, the meetings are in daytime, which makes it pretty much impossible for average people to attend. So unless you're getting time off from work, you're not gonna go to the city council, which makes us one of the least involved and least representative local governments in the entire country, as far as I can tell. I mean, New York has more representatives, has more engagement. Um, same, same thing about Chicago. It's really a highly dysfunctional, um, government. And I think there's one other press person here next to me, but I can't even tell. There was another reporter here, uh, from Public Press earlier, but she's not in the chamber, so I'm the only press person in the chamber, as far as I can tell. And we're gonna go to the phones. So. Here's the staffers just chatting. This one is really snappily dressed. So if you don't know, Spoken Scan is a YouTube channel. And actually, these are people, right, who've been following city council for a long time. And essentially, they just make fun of it. So now there's hardly anybody here. Everybody left. Yeah, Spoken Scan's been around for a very long time. Um, probably at least like five or 10 years. And but this, I mean, I think it's just really poor government engagement here. Um, the government is not interested in the public, the public is not interested in the government. And everybody in the city of Los Angeles, right, kind of has, you know, issues. Um, it's not homelessness, it's the quality of life in the neighborhoods, Scientology, it's police brutality. Um, Black Lives Matter is here, it's pretty off the hook. But as far as like actual people, like, unless you've got like an agenda item, you're not here. This is John Wickham of the Chief Legislative Analyst Office. He's actually a really important player here. And he's gonna come talk to the staffers. He's kind of a nice guy. He had like dental surgery a couple of weeks ago. He could barely talk in the homelessness meeting. Kevin Deleon came back out now. So. He's gonna talk. God, he looks terrible. He hasn't shaved and he's eating while he's talking. He used to be one of the most more dignified politicians in the state of California, too. It's kind of sad. If anybody knows what Kevin Deleon is eating, it looks like dates, maybe? I know, he's just looking worse and worse. I mean, wanting to grow a winter beard is one thing. It's colder, you know? Even I, like, I've beard in the past, but like Kevin's just looks like an alcoholic beard. He's laughing now, he's smiling. He's having a good time, he's gonna do his hair. Yeah, everyone's kind of like, I mean, I feel sorry for the guy at some level, but no. Yaroslavsky's over there having a good time, laughing. Roman, Bloemenfeld. And Kevin. Still got food in his mouth. If anybody knows what he's eating, let me know. Hope he's gonna come over. He's gonna come over and talk to staffers? Nope. He's gonna go talk to the lobbyist. So Kevin knows where the money is. This guy is really, really, really good at raising money. The problem was, the voters hated his ask for being a racist and for being kind of ineffective. Yeah, he doesn't really give a frick. I don't know who the guy is on the left. I suspect probably like a business association or something. Oh, we're getting comfortable. Waving their hand around. He's pointing, he's laughing. All right, so the, the meeting is still happening, right? But Kevin has actually left the horseshoe and is back here. He's just chilling. I'm gonna get myself a picture. I mean, fair play, you're in public, there's zero expectation of privacy here. That's somebody. I got myself a picture, so if we can figure out who this is, who he's talking to, right? I don't think he's gonna let me interview him. I could just go sit right next to him, right, and try to hear what they're talking about. He might talk. He wouldn't be interviewed, he, he declined to be interviewed by the Los Angeles Times for an endorsement. He wouldn't actually sit with even the Times editorial board. Actually, what's kind of interesting is on the tapes, um, I just quoted it yesterday, you can hear him express that he thinks the LA Times should be audited. I don't know if LAPD would stop him if I went and just interrupted the conversation. I'm like, what are you talking about instead of doing your job? But he is laughing, he's having a good time here. We might be able to identify the guy. Yeah, it's you. We're in city council. Business is over there. I'm crazy. You're suing people. That's a Weezer guy? So the meeting is actually in session, right? This is the city council, right? They're in session. He's back here. Yeah, it's not a surprise. I mean, you can hear him on the tapes, right? He, he tries to distance himself from Weezer, right? Like, oh, I'm not this bad as Jose, right? I don't even know the guy. Look, it's the same frickin' behavior. Yeah. And like, literally, the meeting is in session, right? Yeah. And he's, he's just back here socializing. So, like, you guys, you know, let's just figure out, who, who's, who's lobbyist guy over there? I mean, I'm not even the one who lost Isabel Harado, right? So like, you can get mad, but to the extent that recording, right, is a tool for accountability. I just wonder what's up with the beard? I mean, he's been looking really rough, like, like, he's sweaty. It's hot in here and Kevin is sweaty. More people.
Good morning. Could you please remind us that any of the items you'd like to speak to?
Uh, Lee Harrison, I have a number three, oven and a public.
And so one minute for the items, one minute for general, please give the argument.
Uh, it's more than a person allowed to speak, they're trying to be Harrison, the CEO for this county.
All right, so this guy's actually here to do a public comment. Right. Deleon is back. Get good pictures of these people. So. City government. I think he's just gonna run away. Like, this is one thing I know about people with cameras, is that if you have a camera on them, they will actually come and approach the camera usually. I also don't know how LAPD is gonna react by going confront him, and I'm like, why aren't you doing your job?
Alicia Avery, I'm the general permit, number forty-four, number one. Thank you so much. So my name is Alicia Avery, I'm a local resident and a member of the D.C. Advisors Council.
Yeah, I mean.
I join a number of neighbors.
This is the political class.
And near 1,500 science institutions have been calling for the rejection of the Bon Tempanet lease. That this lease is even backed up for reconsideration after the city council already made the decision on March first. To reject the Bon Tempanet lease for valid reasons is a crucial example of a severe lack of respect in our city council on part of Lawa and Bon Tempanet. Instead of respecting the city's decision and furthering the new fair and open bidding process, including all incentive bidders, Lawa and the involved parties of the Bon Tempanet lease took several years away to get this specific unethical lease forced through anyway. The city attorney's October 29th letter to the FSA FAA acknowledges that the public already knew Lawa may represent its task to FAA on
Yeah, I know, right? Like, I mean, he's engaged in litigation, right? So he has an active lawsuit against two people who leaked those tapes. He doesn't like me reporting on it. He doesn't like me asking questions about it. So his response is to act like I was I didn't go interrupt him, I mean, we're in a public meeting room, you know?
I wanna first start by thanking you for making the reception and allowing the last two speakers to be here today, or the last three, I should say. Um, because they're here, I wanna speak to council members, Hugo, Roman, Harvey, Koster, all of whom either personally or their staff has been very sensible in doing the whole work.
John Lee's snagging.
They have educated on this topic.
Or just gonna stand back here.
Um, council member President Harris Dawson, I'm pleased that you're here so that I can advise what I have spoken to the other council members about. I have consulted with aviation airport attorneys on this topic before I've been to get any opinions that I've provided to you guys, so that you know that the arguments being raised are viable and productive. You've only had the benefit of Lawa's general counsel, your general counsel.
Yeah. I think he's just gonna stand back there and smile.
Um, it's to refer to Lawa's counsel. That means you're giving one guy's opinion, dump the party that's culpable in the collusion. I know that council members prefer the word collaboration. Bon Tempanet acknowledged to collaborate with Lawa since 2018 on this lease. That is a clear violation of City Charter Section 10.15. I say that you're not just committed on record, although it's already on record because the council members have been listed there. I ask you, please defer to council member India Ellis, because she's the only party that spoke with all stakeholders and who reviewed a lot of the evidence, including nearly 3,000 documents. She can go through 3,000 documents. well, she didn't go through 3,000 documents from the reputation that I did, and had picked certain documents for her to be able to present as evidence. A lot of that you have not even seen. The FAA based their flawed determination on...
Alright, like a closed public comment for today's meeting. Madam clerk, what is before us today, right now?
Councilman now voted on item 11, sir.
Alright, item 11 is before us. Councilmember Price has refused himself for this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate vote. 13, 9. Alright, what's next?
Next would be, there's a request to reconsider item 3.
Alright. Let's open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll, tabulate vote. 14, 9. Alright. Next.
He's gonna go back to work now, huh? Ridiculous. That's okay, we'll see him in court.
So, for instance, item number 40. Initially, it was continued due tomorrow to September 4th, so it was not open for public comment. So, council should actually not vote on that item. Alright, given that information, what's next?
So, in light of this...
Well, that's interesting.
...F S A's announcement, what's next is to re... is to continue item 3 to December 4th.
Without objection, it's been continued again.
Yes, sir. What's next is next, is before council is item 1, 2, 4 through 9, 18 through 23, 25, 27 through 31, 33 through 41, 43, and 45 through 48, sir.
Alright, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate vote. 14, 9. Alright, what's next?
Next would be item 10, and that was amended by William DeWitt, recorder.
Alright, item 10, as amended, is before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate vote. 14, 9. Alright, what's next?
Next is item 41, that was called Chatschel, like, help remember Padilla.
Alright. Alright, so we have item 44 before us. I want to ask the leadership of Lala and the legal representation of the attorney secretary at the center table, as they're joining us, members, just for the record, on this item, that finished these two meetings at Bo Act, who had at least one hearing, and the T T T committee, as well as two closed session discussions, both of which went about two hours. And so hopefully, we're the ones who do this conversation exponentially, exponentially, this morning, and completely state of mind. So, just quickly, before I go, councilmember Padilla, on this, Mr. Ackerman, you were with us. Can you tell us succinctly what's different in what's before us today versus what we sit back to you, we sit back to Bo Act a few weeks ago?
Yes, President Harris Dawson, thank you very much.
I'm not the one who's under investigation by the California Fair Political Practices Commission.
The council asked for three things. The city attorney sent a letter to the A Act on 29th outlining the city's position on rejecting the Bonanza lease. Lala is going to the A Act on 24th. The council would expedite reconsideration of the lease with the approval of the A Act. I consider all future air audit releases to be approved. And then we were asked to renegotiate the process. The renegotiation of the settlement agreement, they wanted a lawsuit, and the 113 complaints have approved. We negotiated to add to the benefits of the lease. We solicited them from every council office and received it from four council offices. We handed it out from the benefits of the lease, and we have that before you today. A couple would pay settlement agreement that would extinguish these civil lawsuits.
Alright, thank you so much for that. Sort of tells us the score based on what we asked the commission to do and Lala to do that was before us today. And we'll begin our discussion with councilmember Padilla.
Yes, my first question is, who were the council offices that you spoke to on what community benefits they were?
She actually works for Lasa, which is Los Angeles Home Services Agency.
Council district 11.
Council districts 2, 3, 4, and 5 responded to our request for...
Correct, invited to that meeting. Well, my question is, what about 6? Given that this affects district 6? And what did each of those council districts, A, wanted?
Your district declined to provide input and told us that because there was not going to be settlement, those members could provide us the community benefits.
Okay, what did District 2 say?
I don't have a wish to vote, I have a duty.
What did District 3 say?
I don't have a wish to vote, councilman.
Okay, so, thank you for getting this conversation started off with lack of information. So my second, my next question is, because if we're talking about the meeting...
Alright, so now he's back there. Shook me around.
Council president's office brought us together. Council district 7 was invited, and they showed up and said, "We're gonna lean on District 6." Council district 12, I believe, came, and they talked about the notification on the part of the airport that was related to them. And District 2 did not show up, District 3 did not show up. Are we talking about the same meeting here? Is that where you got your information, council president's office? Is that what we're talking about here?
I'm not sure you're asking a question to councilmember, you're asking to council president.
I'm asking you, is that the meeting we're talking about? Okay, so then where, who provided you that list of what every single council office talks about?
Our government relations staff asked each council office if they had a...
Who's your government relations staff? Are they here? Can they come and give us the list?
So Kevin is chatting with Adrina Zarian now. Krikorian just walked over and was like...
Mike, do you have that list?
What are you doing? Padilla's actually trying to do work here. Kevin still has tomorrow. I'm gonna try to get him after the meeting. Seems to be about land at the Van Nuys Airport. So Padilla's actually trying to do something for her district. Meanwhile, this jackal spends his time chatting with people in the back. We're gonna figure out who those people are if we can.
Questions, input on what they want, what they... My request in terms of community benefits in this lease. As we got response emails from councilor 2, 3, 4, 6, 8, 11, and 12. There were various items that were discussed. There was wanting to know about the community who had future. From Council District 2, wanting to... With Council District 3, had quite many questions about, didn't have any specific things for this, these side, but was interested in developing the impacts of future community benefits with the future projects. And there were very few specific requests with respect to this specifically, wanting to make sure that things were... Community benefits were developed for future projects again. That's basically trying to stop...
So it sounds like they're very general, they didn't discuss community benefits. Okay, with my...
There wasn't a lot of specificity, yes, sir.
What about the other offices?
I did not receive responses from office 1, Council 5, 7, 9, 10, 13, 14, and 15, to that specific email that happened.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure for the record that we discussed that, given that that was part of Mr. Ackerman's opening statements. And spoke to offices and gathered some community benefits. So... I'm having to go to my second question. Were you gonna respond?
What I was gonna say is, what I said in my opening statement is we received responses from four offices. That is exactly what happened.
Yeah, give me the answer from the four offices. Can you give me the answer from the four offices?
Mr. Adams just read the offices and the response.
He only gave us a response from office, Council District 3.
What I said...
The offices that got response.
What I said...
I hear things?
What I said was we received responses from four offices. I did not say that the offices gave a specific benefit. Some offices responded, Mr. Adams read that they did not have a specific list of benefits they wanted. So my statement remains the same, we received responses from those offices.
So that's what's changed. That's what's changed since you like, came to the group, correct? And then you spoke to the offices, but you didn't get any responses?
No, I didn't say we didn't get any responses. So we spoke to four offices, we received responses.
You didn't get any responses.
And Mr. Adams... And Mr. Adams just read the responses.
Yeah, it's always people have general concern. Okay. My second question is, we asked last time for written confirmation from the FAA on the specific amount and the timeline of funding sources, of funding sources and grants that were under threat. Can you provide that to us today?
We have a list of grants to the airport, the airport plans to approve, apply for. I'm just basically, yes, you should provide that.
Do you have in writing something that says that they are under threat because of the lease?
No, the FAA does not provide letters that threaten the grants.
Okay. I've also noticed, we have two documents, the clerk happened, that were given to us by the officer of the city attorney.
If it's the documents provided by the city attorney's office, it's my privilege. So we should probably go into closed session tomorrow.
We should go into closed session.
Alright, you have to leave the office, we can discuss our session before we stop, we need to...
We should go into closed session. Well, I mean, I'm glad that we didn't get the party started this way, where you were all brought into the conversation and be part of the settlement to get something better. But I'm glad that the full public renounced that that actually was not the case. So we have to already go into closed sessions to talk about the specifics about the settlement, and the specifics about the audience. And then we can talk in closed session about the process of what is on this settlement, and who was at the table for what was being proposed.
So, so Rivers, any other questions that you can see in public session before we stop and go? I just want to get a moment. Alright, Sergeant, if we can prepare it for closed session.
Alright, so we're gonna get kicked out.
We'll be in recess for three minutes, or you can do that.
Kevin Deleon. These are Kevin's friends. Who's K D L? This is K D L. So, Kevin is actually lost his reelection, and Isabel Harado will be taking his job. He's not taking very well. He started growing a beard. And he seems to be coming around to the idea that maybe it's actually gonna end. So this is the rest of the L A city council. And these are friends of Kevin Deleon's, apparently. I mean, it's a good thing this is all on camera, right? Because now we can figure out who these people are. Because homeboy is actually under investigation by the California Fair Political Practices Commission. I'm not making that up. It's in Los Angeles Times. And... The degree of desperation that man has. I mean, I don't know if he's done with politics, but he's been in politics a long time, and now he's gonna be really, really out. I don't know if we're gonna go back in the regular session again, or... Yeah. I don't know if we're gonna go back in the regular session, or they are gonna... Yeah. But if it's gonna come back, I don't think so. I don't know. But yeah, we're closed session, that is correct. Padilla was trying to throw down on him! Padilla was trying to throw down there for landing around the airport in Van Nuys, right? Yeah. I think she wants it to be redeveloped, right? And she wants it to happen a lot faster, so I think her beef was that they are not studying the redevelopment plans fast enough.
She's doing a good job?
Yeah, she was doing a good job. That's why she was like, "And I want the public to see, right?" Like, that's the most theatrics I've seen from Padilla. You know, to show that she's actually fed up with the rest of them, because they're not doing anything. Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna dig into that one a little bit more, what's going on up there in Van Nuys, with the airport land, because like, that's been an issue up there for a very long time, right? It's kind of like one of the forgotten parts of the city. And here, you know, there's money apparently for redevelopment, right, I guess? And they're not even, you know, expediting it to create housing. Yeah, she got feisty there at the end. Yeah, it'll be on the recording, but I gotta figure out what that one is about exactly. She was getting feisty. Yeah, and she was trying to take what was happening in closed session and bring it into public, which is why Marquis went to closed session. Because like, Marquis loves developers. Like, he has always been very comfortable with the developers down in South L A. And, you know, here she's trying to actually get something done for her district, unlike frickin' loser Kevin Deleon. And, yeah, they went to closed session like that. She was trying to talk about, it must be a lawsuit about it up there. Probably, because I mean... Yeah. I mean, they're way... I mean, they're way short of their state housing goals, right? Because they're supposed to build 250,000, uh, new housing units before 2030. And it has not been happening.
When we're, when I was on, I thought it was a fraud.
Yeah.
I mean, the developers really, you know, the key players here so often, um, they have
the most money usually to give to campaigns next to, you know, the police and the fire unions. And, you know, they are, they are a real meal ticket. I mean, that's why Weiser got in trouble, right? Taking bribes from developers. A million and a half.
That's a good story.
They run the city.
Scientology.
Yeah, and Scientology, the special interests. Here's our Assistant City Administrative Officer. Looking for unicorns!
What's his name?
Uh, that's Edwin Gibson. He's the Assistant City Administrative Officer. So he works for the CAO's office. And he's right in the middle of this housing issue, actually. Like, uh, the CAO, really it's the CAO's office, right? Because they're in charge of overseeing the city's housing development plans.
Come on, that's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, good, he's a good person to talk to. He works for Matt Zabo, who's the City Administrative Officer. And then the CAO, right, the City Administrative Officer, is really like, kinda like the Chief Financial Officer and the Chief Planner, and he's unelected. So, like, it's really the most powerful position in the city nobody knows about.
I always seen him here.
Zabo.
Yeah, I always-
Yeah.
So I'm gonna saw him in there, he's in there.
Because I, I think that's what this is about, right? This is, this is about housing development here in Van Nuys, on the, um, airport land to repurpose it.
Yeah, it is, because they gotta be, they gotta be, they gotta be-
Because, I mean, everybody's getting priced out, right? Gentrification. And-
Hold on, is it-
She's going in.
I can't believe why they missed that.
She works for LASSA. So that's actually the temporary, the woman who went there. She works for LASSA. That's Kelsey Madigan. And actually, the judge is quite mad at them, um, because-
Someone just did a short notice, and they made up a political system. And they're supposed to be able to have the trust.
Yeah. No, but, uh, Judge Carter is really mad at City Council because their shortchanging is audit. They don't wanna pay for him to audit homeless services programs.
Interesting.
So that was in the court transcript.
Because there's a lot of money missing.
There's a lot of money missing. At the city level, it's something like $200 million they can account for. And at the county, um, it's firmed up, it's about $45 million they, they need to recollect from, uh, homeless services providers.
Well, and then we see all the stuff that they're doing, infrastructure-wise and public parks, and we're getting all this money for, like, why wouldn't you need statues or, you know, like, museums, stuff like, I mean, why isn't it going for things that are necessary?
I mean, political patronage, right? Like, things that are flashy that make you look good, right? Are more important than sidewalks, it's more important than getting people off the street. You know, you have to pay the cops, um, you know, to get, you know, get the developers happy, you know, uh, because, I mean, a lot of the development is public, subsidized with public money, right? So state and federal money comes into Los Angeles. But what's been happening is they're not tracking that money appropriately. And so there's a huge federal audit going on right now. It's Alvarez and Marsalis, the firm. And they are charged with, uh, auditing, uh, LASSA, um, the city and the county, and also LAPD now, and the Department of Mental Health, to determine why we're failing so badly at homelessness. And this is what they're finding, right? Is the books are a mess. So the county, of course, is considering a new homelessness response agency, and that was the last County Board of Supervisors meeting. So they voted 4-0, uh, 4-0-1 to study whether or not they should create a new agency to respond to homelessness.
Of course, everything, it didn't happen until that kind of policy, you know?
Yeah, exactly. And like, that's where it's, it's a feasibility, um, study, a staffing study, and then, um, they're trying to decide what gets taken out of LASSA and pitted into this, because they don't wanna get rid of LASSA, which is a joint powers, uh, authority of the city and the county. But it hasn't gotten quite to, like, proving embezzlement yet, you know, more just that, like, they got funded a bunch of money, there was taxpayer money for Measure H, and they did not track it appropriately in 2017 to 18.
Exactly, what is that? Oh, we can't build, like, every unit's $400,000, like, on, like, if they were, you know?
They're about 100,000 units short of their state housing goals, which is what the governor has said, you have to produce before 2030. And in fact, like, the laws have become super favorable to development. Um, basically, you can't block anything on sequel grounds, you know, California Environment Quality Act, unless you have a really good reason. So bigger buildings mean more money. And that's really where, you know, the tension is coming in. There was people here the other week who were complaining about that happening in Hollywood. They're like, "Why are you building, you know, a huge, you know, tower right next to my little business?" And all I can tell them, right, is that the law's become very favorable to development. Called the builder's remedy.
Wow. And, and it's funny, like, different neighborhoods have different feelings about it. Someone, we don't, we don't wanna lose all of our houses and all of our private streets to turn into a building, so do commercially, you know, like, there's different, they don't even wanna look into options for, like, they want it all, okay, cover. And so I know there's a lot of points there.
Yeah.
Um, no, let, let the community figure out too, like, that's, I'd say now, that you probably, you know, with the prices or whatever, but, um-
I wanna know who these people are.
I think they'd get more cooperation, but I think they're just take, I don't know what they're doing with the money.
These are somebody staffers.
I'm sure.
Do you work for Kevin DeLeone? Do you work for Kevin DeLeone? No. Who do you work for?
We work for LASSA.
You're LASSA? Yeah, see, that's what we were just talking about, is the auditing, right? Like, um, city audit, county audit, and federal audit. And of course, LASSA needs to recoup about $45 million from service providers. So how fast they pay that money back to LASSA, right, that was working capital, is like a big news story. So I, I, I hope they don't get rid of LASSA. Like, streamlining, you know, um, to, like, creating, like, a newer, bigger agency, right, out of LASSA and the homelessness response, it's more intergovernmental, would make a lot of sense, kinda like Ocasa. But I, I didn't see that happening. I sat through three hours of County Supervisor meeting the other week, and just like, that level of conversation is not happening.
You guys are so hard to get a hold. I had somebody who wanted to get in one of the hotel vouchers, they're on the street, and couldn't get it. They were like, "Yeah, I can go to the mayor." And couldn't get the mayor, she wasn't in a, um, like, a taxi, um, the camp.
Yeah.
She was, you know, and so in a car, she was like, I mean, she, she had nowhere to go. For Monday morning, for, you know, when navigation-
Because, because inside safe will take you, inside safe will take you off the street into a motel, but then getting from the motel and permanent housing is taking like 300 days.
She didn't want to get to a motel. Is there any way to get someone, like, she's like, literally sleeping in her car, and it didn't go well, like, you know, she wants to be in a, in a room, she's disabled, and wants to be in a room, tiny homes wasn't, you know, like, she's willing to go if that's allowed from the door, but she's like, she just wants to be where she can have, you know, access to a bathroom without physical disabilities, you know, and so.
Yeah, they, um, insensitive, possible time, cameras, and so that's probably why she wasn't, probably because of those, those permanent things, sometimes it's not, they have it after that they're already. But, um, she was in, like, the law, the center, or, um, the provider, like, has a walk-in technical accessibility, they see she's in her system, right, and they're in her housing control, and have one of the best of the issues that, you know, in a bit, or the amount of people, it's personal business. So a lot of the population, it's, 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 it's personal business.
Well, and she, uh, well, because also the navigation centers aren't open on the weekend.
Yeah.
So she had to sit there, do, like, Thanksgiving, like, I felt horrible, because it was like Wednesday night, she had to spend, you know, Thanksgiving and stuff, you know, and, like, there's nowhere to go. And she's like, "I just want a hotel." I called everywhere, you know, like, to check her hotel voucher, because she's disabled. She was in a very bad car accident, and there was a lot of physical issues, and, you know, so they just wanted to put her, you know, in the tiny homes. So it's, it's hard to stay in the tiny homes, because you have to go far to get, you know, and the weather and stuff, it's, you know, the people who are disabled, they, they should maybe have a little bit of a fast tracker, where you can get to a hotel, because I can doubt sometimes, just, you know, disabilities, if you don't have a care figure or a care worker, you may need assistance to go, you know, where, to go that far or whatever.
Yeah, a lot of the participants are, um, that want kids in the housing, want to go into, like, single hotel type occupancy units, and that's what can be difficult too, because there's some people that are, like, needing a bathroom.
Right. I mean, I think she'd even be willing to have a roommate, because, like, in the little homes, you have to have a roommate. It's just the, it's just the feasibility of, like, having the bathroom there, you know, right where you are, um-
That makes sense, that's, uh, so, don't we just keep my card, if you want, like, kind of, to me, and then we can see?
Can I?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
I mean, I can make you promises, because I'll see the supplier for the low, but, you know, we can take a look at, see what we can do if she's in our, our system and then what.
Yeah, it's, it's something I knew, like, she was a, a friend, a neighbor of mine, like, one of my best friends, and she ended up becoming homeless because of her, you know, like, her, her accident, really. You know, everyone's just a pain to, like, she became disabled, because she had, like, um, she shattered her, her whole territory, like, she, and her finger, and she had, like, the last ball shattering of her bone. Yeah, so she was severely injured.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, so it's really hard for her, it's just, I knew, like, maybe, maybe, maybe her, she was young, you know, her mom, and right on to the kid, you know, was in, taking her kids, whereas it's just this point in her life, you know, and she, you know, and she didn't want to bring her kids out, like, she had nowhere to go.
Yeah.
You know?
And we, we hear that all the time, and it's such, it's such a tragedy. It's a tragedy. It's definitely a tragedy, so if you can do anything, if there's anything available, definitely try to, try to connect with her.
All right, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna tell you, so, I'm gonna have them get an Audit LA, that's, so, I'm gonna say she's a friend of Audit, like, Audit LA sent her, and that's amazing, you know, it's her.
Okay.
I get that, because I, I deal with the, the Church of Scientology, you know, so I try to keep us, you know, things retaliating, sorry, to be honest.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so I've heard of them retaliating, you know, but, um, so, I'll, I'll have a good one with her. Oh, she does want to know.
Did they approve the bed rate increase?
No, that's as far as I know.
Yeah, because it was 14, but it, it didn't come up for a comment.
No, I don't think it's come up.
Yeah, because, because, because it's gonna be flat pretty much through the rest of the fiscal year, and then 2025, big increase. Which of course is what the, you know, providers want. And, I mean, $69 a night is pretty low. It's not even a motel room in LA.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I'm pulling for you, LASSA, don't get dismantled.
Yeah, no, we need LASSA.
Yeah.
We need LASSA, I mean-
I mean, ma- ma- maybe a bigger, better LASSA, you know, or, like, expanded resources. I, I don't know what the plan is over there with the supervisors. I think they should do, like, La Casa 2.0, right? Make it intergovernmental. That would make so much more sense, and it would kinda, you would have one, you know, one intergovernmental on, on homelessness, and then one on housing. And it'd be more like ginnian versus kinda like the current, like, mismatch and, like, hodgepodge of agencies they have going on. And then, of course, we were like, "Well, if the county creates a homelessness agency, does the city of LA do that finally too?" Because they've been talking about that for a very long time. Because the city actually doesn't have a homelessness department. It's run through the mayor's office, you know, for inside safe. So like, kinda like what the structure is there. And then, like, I know, like, Ryan Thompson over at La Casa, he thinks he's gonna get, like, a five to one, like, private dollar to public dollar match. But right now, we're not getting, like, anything close to that, because nobody's trying to raise money from, you know, philanthropists, and, you know, people who are developers and have money, right, to give money. So like, otherwise, it's all taxpayer money, and that's where people are getting very resentful.
Should I have her, um, like, I don't know, I don't know, just an email, is this, we have a phone, could I have her call yourself or something, or, like, they text you or not?
Yeah.
Would she be able to text you and say, "I'm Audit's friend"?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they actually do a response. I mean, like, um-
I'm gonna actually go and tell her, okay, I'm gonna go and-
Supervisor Han was very pleased with that weekend response team at the last supervisor's meeting. She was like, "They showed up and they cared." Thank you, LASSA.
If you can talk, I was gonna, I'm gonna get off, guys, I'm gonna get off and just text her a little bit.
There you go. See, they canceled the Prop HH meeting already, so, it's already canceled.
What is?
Prop HH Administrative Oversight Committee. So like, there's like three different committees that meet under the CAO's office. And this is one of them, but they always cancel this one. And then is, there's Affordable Housing Commission, that's just old. Or it's Homeless Strategy Committee meeting, that's the one that's really-
The one?
Homeless Strategy Committee under the CAO's office. Nithia's been getting mad at me for showing up and recording it. They hired a consultant too. I don't see it up yet, I have to check. I think it's this Thursday afternoon. And that one is in City Hall East across the bridge.
That's the homeless one?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's kinda like where LASSA and the county meet with the city, and then they discuss before it goes to Housing and Homelessness Committee. So it's kinda like the precursor meeting to it. So it's Nithia, Matt Zabo, uh, usually Edwin Gibson, the Assistant CEO is there, and then for the mayor's office, Etamaya Gonifer, who's the deputy mayor. Just, but I don't see the agenda. We have the cancellation, but, maybe they canceled already. This is old.